Here.
Want to head some up Thursday?
Executive Committee, Thursday, five.
Thirty.
Five thirty.
Okay.
You'll be my guy.
Absolutely.
This, that's some duties.
Yes.
Yep.
I had work that come up.
Okay, Tina, you may go. Okay. I am going to call to order this Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, July seventh, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Call to order, roll call, Tina Paul for Selectmen, to my right is Martin McKinney, Selectman. To my left is Rich Grabowski, Selectman. Three, four, six members of, I'm sorry, Lisa.
It's okay, no worries.
Lisa Wood, Executive Assistant. And we have seven members of the public present. Item number two, executive session, nope.
No, but.
But.
Pledge of Allegiance, is it on here?
I can't, I say, so the agency still.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay. Item number three, approval of meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve items three, A, B, C, D, E, and F and G as presented.
I second our motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve minutes. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and then Lisa had an additional here.
They are included on there.
G.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. For A. Letter from Ivan Pulaski for resignation from the America Two-Fiftieth Committee.
I regretfully accept their resignation. Oh, I make a motion. Do you want to make a motion?
No, no.
No, no.
And that's the only correspondence. Five A, old business, discussion and possible action on proceeding with the results of the local government research committee.
Okay.
Rich, this is you.
Well, I, I think we spoke about it briefly at the last meeting. Uh, we need, as a board, need to make a decision if we're gonna go forward or not. Uh, like I said earlier, that we have, uh, we have, get all this, the question together for the bu- for the ballot in November to the town of Park, it was by September first. I have been working, uh, this past week with the town attorney and crafting the questions that'll go on, still subject to approval by the Secretary of State's office, but as of right now, this board needs to think and decide whether they want to go forward with this proposal or not.
I'm, I'd like to make a motion that Rich proceeds with, um, what he's doing with the, our attorney and have it approved by the Secretary of State and, um, uh, put this, let's get it on our referendum for November election if we can.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, for Rich to proceed. I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, five B, discussion and possible action on possible conversion of the high school tennis courts to pickleball courts.
How do you make out with that, um, for, oh, for red or the, for the superintendent?
Okay, I received a call from the superintendent and had a meeting with him, um, this week along with, um, Glenn Lebasier. And we discussed, and it was just, it's really just preliminary discussion. Um, Eric Christensen and I, uh, we did go up, we looked at the tennis courts. They do need a, um, a considerable amount of work. And then we went down to the Lisbon facility to look at their pickleball courts. Um, and we did have an opportunity to talk with, um, a tennis instructor down there. Um, we spoke at length with him. Um, and what I'd like to do is, um, I've been doing a little bit of research on, um, there are pickleball fund, grant funds out there, so I'd like to research that a little bit more. I would also, um, I'm gonna take a ride to, I, I was told to check out Wyndham. Wyndham did a very good job with, um, a pickleball facility, so I'm gonna look at that. Uh, we do have a gentleman that we're gonna talk to about, um, pickleball, uh, how you would either create one out of, um, say, the tennis courts or create a new one. But I, I'm gonna do a little bit more homework on it and, um, and then we'll make a decision. I've also identified two other potential locations in the town. And we need to check and see what the, um, the possibility could be in another location.
Okay.
So we're just, it, it's a general, um,
I would.
Do your homework and, and then we'll see what we come up with.
I would consider, uh, if, if the, the work's gonna be done to refurbish the existing tennis courts, that similar to what they did on a football field, you could still do four tennis courts with four pickleball courts inside the tennis court, so then you, you have multiple applications.
Right.
But they haven't made it, the Board of Ed hasn't made a commitment.
Yeah, I know. I'd say if we get that.
Other places, and if, if they come aboard, they can board if they don't.
I agree.
I think every, it's just overall, everybody's going to have a conversation and we will be able to come up with, um, a decision.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, um, six. New business. Discussion and possible action on social media issues.
I have none.
I have none.
I have nothing.
Bless you.
Bless you. Six B, discussion and possible action on appointment of Richard Wassilak to the America Two Hundred and Fiftyth Committee.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Rich Wassilak, uh, to the America Two-Fifty Committee.
I second our motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item six C, discussion and possible action on waiving of town building permit fee. Um, I think we had discussed this before. And, um, it had to do with, um, one of the projects on one sixty-four.
Well, this is, this is a sewage project, correct? So we're waiving our own fees for our own.
Yeah.
That's normally done.
And I did preliminary, um, I did preliminarily approve it with the building office, but I, I wanted to have a vote on that, just so that, um.
I make a motion, we waive the town fees for the town job on sewage treatment plant.
Pump house.
Uh, pump house, pump house.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive those fees, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. D, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of two residents to the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority.
I may have some time after January, so I'd, I'd like to put my name on that list. Or just be on that total.
Okay. All right.
That's okay. I'll send you a letter.
Yes, please send a letter in. All right, and we are looking, so we'll, we'll be looking for another resident to, um, serve on the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority. If anybody has any interest, submit your letter of interest to the Selectmen's Office. Okay. E, discussion on senior center food pantry. Um, I received word from the director that, um, through the United Way, um, most of you know that we currently do a monthly food distribution up at the Public Works facility. And United Way had put out some time ago a request to different organizations and facilities, um, to do an in-house food pantry. You had to submit an application, which Lisa Martel did. Um, it was very selective and it wasn't, it wasn't a, um, situation where everybody was approved. So United Way did come into the senior center. They did, um, look at the facility and because they have cooling, um, extensive cooling capability along with freezer and then dry space, the senior center was approved, so in speaking with Lisa, it's looking like in September, and it's going to be every other week, and it's going to be for the senior community where the seniors can come in, um, and everything will be handled in-house by volunteers and the seniors will have an opportunity, so I think that's, um, that's, I, I'm really pleased to, to hear that, uh, they were accepted, they were approved.
Is that the diminished lines at the Public Works? Because you have the people who are gonna go there, have the people who are gonna go.
Well, we can't.
How does that work?
We can't discriminate.
Right, so the seniors are gonna be at your place, or everybody can go to the seniors.
No, it's, it's, if you're a senior, you can go to the senior center.
Okay.
All right, and it, it's good because it's going to accommodate, you have three senior housing facilities there. And you also have, um, Oak Tree, which, um, they have a number of seniors living up there, so, um, you know, and this may help, it may help diminish the lines up at the distribu- it could, I think it remains to be seen.
Okay.
Do they have to be members?
No.
Sure.
No. Um, and, and as a matter of fact, I mean, any of the activities at the senior center, it's always been, you do not have to be a member to participate in the activities, so.
I didn't even want to join. I got on, I'm not the old.
Uh, yeah, you are.
I feel a membership card coming in. All right, so that, that was just discussion on that. Um, F, discussion and possible action on short-term rentals, Airbnbs.
Wow. I'm back.
It's back, it's a boomerang.
It, it's back. Um, this is just my outlook on it, because we've been getting a number of concerns, emails.
Well, Mario sent out cease and desist, so that's why you're getting responses.
Exactly. And Mario did go on and he started doing a little bit of research on who's advertising or who's putting their properties out there on Airbnb. And he's come up with a good amount in the town of Griswold. So we got to talking about it and what we stated was because there's nothing in our zoning regs about short-term rentals, that because that's the way it is, it's not allowed.
That's, that's what we've got interpreted by the town's attorney.
Right. But how does that inform the public? It doesn't, it's still, if you have somebody living on the pond, how would they know?
How would you know the speed limit sign, you know, you know the speed, those laws and regulations, it is what it is.
But I just wanted to put out there, would it be helpful to put out a mailer? That outlines, you know, the details of, of what you can and cannot do?
But there's other rules and regulations, if you're gonna start with one, you're gonna have to do a bunch more than, right? I can't think anything right off the top of my head, but if you're, if you're actually gonna go out there and tell people, this is not allowed, I mean, I'm sure there's other things that aren't allowed that we should notify them about, does that make any sense? You know, uh.
Well, what would be a good way to let these, these property owners know?
Well, let, let's, let's, let's take the list that, that this, let's take the list that of an organization wanted to have all the town businesses. Okay, that list. If you really go through that list, are those, some of those businesses, some of those properties aren't, aren't zoned for commercial use and stuff.
Right.
So how big do you want to open this can up to all this stuff?
That's a valid point.
That, 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 you know, I, you know, you know, I don't know how big you want to blow this up to the point where, but that's, well, you know, more information you get, you got it. Now, you know, there's stuff that's not being done correctly. Is it our obligation to go after every one of those things and make sure they're done correctly, or do we wait for complaints to do it? Or do we have to tell people that you can't do it, which they already know you can't do it? So how broad do you want to make this list of?
So.
That people, you tell them that you're not allowed to do, that's what my concern is. And this is the first time I'm thinking about this, because the first time.
No, I know, and, and I, I don't think we've really had a, in that discussion. But, so is it sufficient that when we get a complaint, Mario investigates?
That's what.
And it issues the cease and desist.
As, as far as zoning, okay, I can only speak for, I don't know what our policy is here, but we only act on written complaints. Because anybody can say anything they want, but if it's a written complaint, we, we act on it.
No, understood.
That's what we've done for years, as long as, from Clyde, from Clyde Seaman to Gail to myself, that's just.
Okay.
That's what it's always been.
Yeah.
All right.
That makes sense.
Okay.
But that's not to say we can't be proactive, but that's what you guys want to do, I don't know what you want to do.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I can talk to Mario. Um, he was pretty good about going out and looking, you know, doing the research. And I, I was, I was surprised.
No, there's definitely a lot out there.
Yeah. So do we need to, um, have any action on this?
I, I think that Tom has been kicking this around for as long as I can remember, probably close to ten years, they went to zoning, zoning was told that we were supposed to go to ordinance, I, I'm maybe out of my sequence. We went to ordinance and then it was, the attorney said it can't be an ordinance, it has to be, it has to be the Selectman, this is up past administration, we take it to the Selectman's office. It wasn't acted on, then it, it just sat there and just sat there, you know what I mean? And so now it's coming back.
It all comes down to the same thing, Cory, how you enforce it. If you can't enforce it, you know, you, you can ask the state police to go out there, but they're not gonna go.
Well, one of the things that I will.
Usually, you're not gonna send the fire marshal.
Well, one of the things that, that, that was a big thing, well, we, we started with ordinances and, I think it was ordinances and, and zoning at the time. Our biggest issue was, it was like, it was another issue with noise, another, the noise complaint. So, uh, we went through that, which is unwritten rule, so how, you know, that's, I'm bringing stuff up as I'm thinking about it, but you know, the issue is, uh, we don't have the staff to, to, somebody has a big party in Airbnb, that's at night, okay, and we don't have the staff to go down there, document it, deal with it. What we do is get a neighbor complaint the next morning, that there was a big party all the, over the weekend or what's going on. So, so part of the enforcement is the mechanism that we can have somebody to respond to determine, to determine what's going on down there too, you know what I mean? And we don't have the, right now, we don't have the manpower or the night, and the state police won't do it, we already went, we went that route. We, we discussed it with the two at one time, and they're not interested in enforcing our Airbnb regulations. So they're not interested in enforcing noise regulations, and they're not, they're just interested in responding to what they need to respond to. That's, so unless we can respond to it, we can't deal with it, uh, in my, in my, from a, from a practical point.
Right.
Outside of, uh, letters or communicating that way, there's no other way to get the message across, I guess. There's none I can think of anyways.
Well, I'm, I'm not against sending a letter out, but I just don't know how long you want to make this letter, you know, that's the other thing.
Um, maybe? Checking with, doing some research on how do the other towns handle it, because I'm sure.
Oh, they fight, you beat them to two hundred a day, that, that's all, that's a big thing, they're fighting, now I banned them, they're getting sued because they banned them, it's, it's a, it's a battle, it's a, it's a.
We looked at it.
And I, I see it both ways, I see.
Legit, legit had something and then they backed off on.
Right, I see, I, I, I see both sides of the fight, I think if you have a piece of property rich and it's, it's, it's on the water and you rent it out, that's your right as a property owner to do that. You know, and, but I also see that I'm a neighbor of yours and, and it's being rented out every weekend and there's parties and a bunch of kids and it, that's not the quiet uh, uh, lake front or, or town front or whatever your property that.
I understand.
So I see both sides of it, but I don't know where the, the gray line in the middle is.
Can you put restrictions on if it's?
Well, I.
If it is going to be rented, the number of people.
Well, Airbnb does that, now we're out of control, that's, that's up to them, that's, that we, you know, and there's no zoning regulations, I can say to Rich's house, okay, Rich, you can only, you know, you can only, well, there is. But six people, well, by bedroom size and how many people, but, but then it, it's just a weekend, so if they have thirteen people in there for the weekend and a big party would, and it's a car, it's, it's, uh, the noise and the, it just never is gonna, it's, it's a tough.
It all boils down to enforcing.
It's a tough.
You can make the rules, but if you can't.
Can't enforce it, don't, you know.
Enforcement is the problem.
Well, we don't, we're not, we're not set up to, we can be set up to enforce it if we get somebody who wants to, Mario or, or another staff person that wants to work and I have to respond to this stuff. That's really what it comes down to.
So how do you want to handle it?
That's on weekends. I'd say let Mario keep doing his job until we.
Ask, tell Mario to put something together, send it to the, in, people involved and.
The cease and desist?
Yeah, as they come in writing, we deal with them.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
No, to just keep them, I, I, I don't think.
So we just keep, we continue on the way that we have.
Unless you want to make new law or make new rules.
Well, why don't we get through this season and talk with Mario and see what his feelings are?
And if you want to have a public hearing, that is most, we've, I've had four of them, three of them. With people with Airbnbs and people that want to use them, it's, it's a very, it's a very emotional.
And they both have their point.
Oh, absolutely.
Both sides, you have to listen to both sides.
And well, no, I agree with them too, I, I see both sides.
Okay, all right. I'll talk with Mario. All right, going on to item number seven, any other business that may properly come before the board?
I have one.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to bring before the board for, uh, discussion and possible action, uh, adjustments to the Public Works Director's, uh, contract.
I second that motion.
All right, there's a motion in a second and I am going to recuse myself.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Okay, just to explain my. So, explain myself. I guess, uh, I did the, uh, Public Works Contract, uh, negotiations and, uh, I guess adjustments to the Public Works Director's contract, it's only done at that time, but I dropped the ball. We, Martin and I both met with Todd and we discussed it and, uh, there's just a couple little small things that we need to adjust, uh. Uh, I will make a motion that we adjust the Public Works Director's contract, wage increase of two dollars an hour. And as a one-time carryover to allow him to use his comp time uh, from thirty days to sixty days just for this period of time. Uh, there was a contract, the year he ended six thirty and, and normally they get thirty days to use their comp time. He's requested to extend that for sixty days for one time, one time only.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion made in a second, any further discussion? During none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Just keep going without it.
Tina.
You should really go on the stairs.
Oh, you're gonna go to the other?
Yeah.
Wonder if you need any friends in the ceiling. All right. All right, so we're still under number seven, any other business that may properly come before the board. I would like to make a motion to bring on to the agenda um, a survey that we have put out there, it's a five-minute survey, um, for a roads, it's a road safety survey.
Uh, we'll put it on the.
That's a second one.
A second, second.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so the Public Works Director and I sat in, um, it was an invitation to discuss road safety, it was a, a DOT and, um, Council of Governments effort along with, um, the company Beta. And what they are doing, um, they're doing research on the roads. Um, and they're focusing on roads that have had, um, multiple accidents or death. And they sent us a flyer that we have posted on the town website. And it's a five-minute survey to help improve road safety in southeastern Connecticut. And we sent it to the, um, Borough Warden and asked her to post it on their uh, social media.
Should we send it to public safety too, so they?
Did you get this? Public, public safety? All right, um, I will give this to you, all right? And then, um, if, uh, anybody's listening or anybody who's here, um, please go on and take the survey, it, it's a five-minute, very easy. All right. Right, and that's that, I just wanted to make, put the awareness out. And then, um, I would also like to motion on to the agenda. Um, a community update on the Route One-Sixty-four project. And we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I, um, the board and I have put together a um, informational community update on, uh, some of the goings-on for the Route One-Sixty-four project. Um, there's been a lot of, and I'm going to read it, we'll put these out after. All right. And then when I'm done, we're gonna put out, um, the documents over there, but there's been as happens, um, some information gets out there, it gets distorted, and we agreed as a board that, um, we wanted to come up with an informational letter that details exactly what is going on with the project up there, with the water project. Um, this is factual, so anything that's discussed about the water line from here on in, the information is over there and I would request that.
You'll read it?
Yep, I'm gonna read it. Um, I would request that everybody take a copy of that before they leave. Okay, community update. In twenty-twenty-two, an application for CIF, which is Community Investment Fund, was submitted to support the Route One-Sixty-four Water Project. We received notice of an award and DEC, which is the Department of Economic Community Development, sent the town of Griswold approval for the town to go out to bid, which we did. And that bid was approved. Okay? Work on that project has been slated to begin with contracts having been signed and construction materials in holding. Recently, in June of this year, we were contacted by DECD and the CIF Fund. And they notified us that they had just received word that the Heritage River Project was no longer moving forward. And therefore, funding from CIF would be paused. Not taken away, paused. This decision came at us out of the blue. Their justification was that when the CIF application was submitted in twenty-twenty-two, it heavily favored the Heritage River Village Project, which they believed was no longer viable. They made it very clear, and you've seen this on the news, that housing in the state of Connecticut is a priority for eligibility and being able to move forward with the water project. Um, that was one of the criteria that they're stressing. Shortly thereafter, and I'm talking about a week, we were asked again to meet with DECD and the Heritage River team for the announcement that the Heritage River Project was back on the table, but with some changes. Heritage River Village proposes splitting their property into two parcels. The back portion will provide two hundred and ten units of housing, the front portion and some commercial, we don't know what that commercial is. The front portion will be marketed through colliers for industrial slash commercial use. They will be working with NHP. NHP is the National Housing Partnership to. NHP is the National Housing Partnership to try and make this happen. This is an arrangement that is supported by the DECD. They are supporting the Heritage River proposal. And they have clearly stated that until financing and housing plans are resolved. Will, we will remain on pause, something that we are fighting vigorously. The Board of Selectmen has argued that this pause is detrimental to the town. And the project. Much of the preliminary processes for the water line have been completed and the town is ready to begin. Work on the sewer line is very near completion. And infrastructure that does not provide both water and sewer serves no purpose for the development on that corridor. We are working together with Hartford legislators to try and resolve this. We intend to keep the community informed as this moves forward and we, um, will be meeting to talk about. Um, beginning the water line process. I have been working with Senator Sommers. Um, she is in agreement with how we feel. And I have also been in contact with Congressman Courtney's office because. The funding for the sewer is USDA funding, which is federal. And, um.
Water, the water. The water fund.
No, USDA sewer. All right, and then they're in agreement that that sewer line without the water line. Is not, it's not an option. So we have people working on this and we are going to be having a special meeting. And we're going to continue to fight the battle, but we did not see this coming. Okay, now, if anybody has any questions about this. You, and, and you need answers and you need the correct answers. I would encourage you to please call the Selectmen's Office. If we don't have the answer, we will find out. We'll get an answer for you. Okay, so this document is there for everybody to please take a copy, all right? And that's all I have to offer on that tonight. All right, so is there any other business that may properly come before the board?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, then we will move on to number eight, public forum. Okay, we're gonna start with Mr. View.
Dave View, Fifty-Nine Weir Avenue. Yeah, only had two items before you guys started talking about Airbnb, that made it three. I don't think there's anyone, with maybe the exception of Jim Barney, who worked as hard on the town ordinance. Not any zoning ordinance, they're two are different for Airbnb. And we spent probably a couple of years on it and a lot of hours. In the process of every meeting, having Airbnb owners show up. They can't say they don't know about the town's regulations. When we were doing it, I had researched and found thirty-four. Registered online Airbnbs in the Town of Griswold. And I don't know if that coincides with Mario's numbers or not, but seems like a lot. And a lot of those people, we filled this room a few times.
Okay.
So people know about it. And, you know, it's like, you get arrested for spitting on the sidewalk, I didn't know, too bad. Ignorance of the law isn't an excuse. Um, you folks still have. Should still have in your files our last approved copy that the Ordinance Committee did for Airbnbs. Lot of those people that were there didn't like some of the rules. They didn't want to have to pay for a permit. They didn't, you know, there were a lot of things they didn't want to have, they didn't want regulations. So, you gotta kind of give up some things to get some things. And, and I'll, I'll kind of leave that one, because I don't want to go through that ordinance again, and I'm sure Mr. Barney doesn't either. The next thing is, you brought up the. Unregistered home occupation businesses that EDC has made up a list for. And you made the statement that, how much do you want to go after these people? Well, you know what? If I build something onto my house and I don't get a permit. I get a fine, I get a cease and desist, I get a fine. These people should get the same thing. They should be paying for their home occupation permits. They should be paying the extra taxes or whatever they get when they do home business. Why should home, you know, homeowners have to cover their load because they don't want to do it? You know, they want to make extra money. I, I've sat in my neighborhood where we had at least at one time, seven home occupations. That were just too much. And hopefully it's died down, I think I'm down to three. But I, I would like to see that list published because then I think the town needs to go after these people. They need to one, sign up, get their permit. And then they need to pay whatever tax addendums they gotta do. Don't have to make it retro, just make it current. And then they gotta come in every two years.
Yep.
And reapply.
That's right.
You know, I think there's four people that come in every two years, because I sit through the P and Z meeting. And then finally, on your. Change of government. I'm sure you folks do not sit up here out of the kindness of your heart and the devotion to your town and country. I'm sure you receive a stipend, I'm sure you receive health insurance and maybe even life insurance or some type of compensation.
I don't get a stipend, I don't have the health and life insurance.
But, if we're gonna put in and get a vote. We need to let the voters know what it's gonna cost. If they vote for five people or five selectmen, how much is those two extra selectmen gonna cost? How much is it gonna raise the mill rate?
I don't think we get like three grand, right?
Yeah.
They only get like three grand for the whole year.
Yeah.
Volunteer firemen get more than rich than I do.
Or some flowers.
That's, that's, that's something, Dave, that's, that's transparent through the budget, you know? If they, they leave it the way it is, that they know what the cost is gonna be. If they bought a finance chart, wants to raise those figures, then they have to go through the budget process.
Yeah, I, I would assume there is some cost. Just in the budget for selectmen.
Yeah, well, three thousand a piece.
Yeah.
Something like that, maybe twenty or, I don't know, it's good, it's.
You're over, Dave. And I'll, I'll even it that, I just think the voters need to know what they're in for.
The first selectman is a salary, along with health insurance.
Yeah. But when I'm expanding health, just expand.
I thought that was one of the votes that you were.
What's that?
Gonna do five, wanted to do five selectmen.
Yes.
Yes.
And then go two or four years.
No, yeah, I, I think we, sometimes we get ahead of ourselves. My, my purpose at, at right now is to get that, that, uh, proposal to as many people as I can. And get the feedback, I mean, if they vote no on, on it, then it, then it's null and void. If they say yes, then you can go forward and be more definitive and, and, and.
My, my opinion is both.
I'm simply.
Stick with three.
Simply, uh, that's where we're at, you know, if there's. Uh, adjustments to the ordinance after the fact, you know, you got two years to. Define it a little bit. Better, but I mean, that's, right now, my goal right now is to find out if they want it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm shooting for.
It's up to the town. Okay, um, Ransom, you were next?
Okay, I'll be here. Ransom Young, uh. So, for the sewer, by, by, uh. Connecticut Water, or by the sewer, uh, people, extension, boy, contracted, so they're big now.
The sewer, sewer line has, it's already in.
We're just waiting for the pump stations.
Yeah.
Components to come in.
Pump station.
Right. No, it's already been. Already been bid, already been awarded, we're just waiting for the components, some of those components. Are months and months lead time on some of those pumps and some of those things, uh. The, the building's in to put them in, in the ground, we're just waiting for the components. That physically pump the sewage and move the sewage and stuff like that.
Yep, all right, second point, I'm not an Airbnb person, I never. Looked at one of those locations, those are stuff comes to me when I'm hot, when I worked at Boss. Very, very, too, so, anyway. Um, I'm watching the session last night, occasionally, I never, this conversation, well, it's what happened in Russia. With the small towns, they used to be under the Soviet Union. Bombing communities. And people used to go to Moscow. To some of these communities at vacation. Well, when they privatized them, now, the thousands of these small towns of all. Docks, it's not a thing left them. Sometimes there's two or three people left where they were far or five hundred. So. Their. Comment was, it's about time if the government. Or if the people who own these farms now, they're bought up by people from the city, and that's happening in this country. The big billionaires are buying land, a lot of it, well, they could get the hands. Through the gates, want to see all four hundred, five hundred thousand acres. And so on and on it goes. But usually what that leads to is a lapse of the water.
Well, we hope not.
So, the comment was, and I'm not a pro-government person necessarily. If the new owners can't keep up the properties. Then they should be forced or compelled to sell it back to. Smaller groups. Groups of people in smaller markets. So that it can be maintained again. And this would go with, uh, the people trying to make money. With housing, and this goes back to nineteen ninety-two, I think, I called up. Um, what was his name, who's the guy that's, uh, in charge of, uh. Of, uh, the community business, the, uh, John, Tom John, right?
Yeah.
And he was on planning the city, and he was instrumental in cutting back the, uh. So he told me. And this is subject to, people refute this, but I called him and he said that he was the one who put in the new. Restriction on the amount of material people could remove from their property without permits. And.
Okay, but we want to keep this on Airbnb and then we, we have two others who'd like to speak, so.
Well, other people, so with that, they're gonna pay their taxes because they had to abide by this new surge in government oversight. And, or like a neighbor used to call it overbearing, so, um. I, I can see the same thing happening with, uh, if you got eighty-four people, I bet most of them are in the country. And you take their income away. Then they're gonna be in trouble tax-wise, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
And, and I think, uh.
All right.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, there, there'll be further discussion on this, but thank you, thank you. Um, I think Jim, and then.
Jim Barney, Seven Thirty-Five Hopeville Road. Um. On the, uh. Airbnb, okay? We did a tremendous amount of work on that as Dave said, and I think we have a very good ordinance already in position. I thought I heard someone say that the state, the state says we can't use that, did, did I misunderstand that comment?
Town's attorney?
Town's attorney, well.
Couldn't use it as a zoning.
As a zoning regulations.
Okay, but we can certainly use it as a, as a, as a regulation.
Right, I think we, if, if you're, if you're gonna pursue it, I think we gotta start all over again and pull all the stuff out and figure out. No, 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 I don't mean it that way, but I mean, get the sequence where we have to move it.
Yeah.
But there was, there wasn't the heart of the people to move it at the time, that, that, it went up and it stopped, you know, so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, before.
We talk, we talk about enforcement on everything, I've talked about. Reinstituting the position that part in our ordinance book about constables. Let's take a, let's take a serious look at the constable issue. See if we can't use that as our enforcement authority in town. On the, on the, still the Airbnbs. Uh, until we had the problem down, I think it was Oscar May. That was, that was the problem, okay? And we had all these other things going on, and most people didn't have a clue about it. They weren't bothering anybody or causing any problems or anything else. And once again, and we do this continuously. Is that we take and go after one particular issue, but we encompass everybody. Let's stop doing that, let's leave people alone as much as possible and let's deal with the, where the problem is. Um. Board of Selectmen. We spent a lot of time on that for this new government thing. And. My argument in expanding the board is that you've got a number of different new opinions that come in, okay? We all have very much, we have a, we have a set in our mind about certain things. But if we have a discussion with other people, with other ideas, it opens our own minds to a greater view. So, I'm supporting the idea of having the board with a minimum of five people. There was one other thing, but I've forgotten it at the moment, but the other gentleman's being.
All right, thank you.
Put my hand in there again.
Yes. Rich?
Rich can open the mic. So, maybe Jim can refresh my memory on this. But as far as that paper that you just read for that whole water project. So at our meeting with the EDC last week, that question had come up about. Is there a risk of losing funding because now it's not residential anymore, it's not anything at this point? And Tom didn't lighten us to the fact that he's in contact with David. And there is the possibility of them doing exactly what you were talking about them doing. But he wasn't like high on hopes of there being any funding for that. So if the funding doesn't happen, then everything goes away, we lose?
They have, they have not said that. They are.
I'm an executive, so I can tell you what I'm telling you because.
DECD.
Yep.
It's almost like when the Glendower group came in. And at that point, when they were discussing Glendower coming in, Glendower was changing an awful lot of the plans. To make it not, mostly housing. And the town decided at that point that they, Glendower needed a letter of support from the board. And we voted.
Yeah, but we wanted them to show us what they're gonna do and they didn't do anything right and to show us what we do, so we had to make a decision based off of.
Now, if you change what's already been approved, you're zoning, now it's another zoning threat.
Right.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So, when we met with DECD, and I think it was just a little more than a week ago, they requested the meeting. Heritage River was brought into it and they. Went over what their plan is and they're gonna be working with a group, um, called NPH.
Uh, Tom told us, I guess.
Yes, and I really think that DECD is working also with NPH. But there's a lot that has to happen. So, where that goes remains to be seen.
Yeah, the, the key part of it is being able to get financing.
Exactly.
Been very successful to be to this point, so there was the thought that they probably won't be going forward.
What they're trying to do is, my interpretation is that they're trying to sell it off.
Right.
They're gonna sell off the back portion to a, to a developer to put in two hundred and ten units. And then they're gonna sell it to somebody else on the front half.
Colliers.
And, and, and build up, uh, another set of apartments. And they're gonna set aside maybe twenty acres or so, say, well, here's this for commercial development someday, type thing, and walk away. So I mean, they've been lying, Rich, they've been lying to us for nine years, they never. Well, that's, that's what angers me so much is that the state of Connecticut and this, uh, DC stuff there that, uh. They listen to the developer, not to the municipality. Then, then, they're not representing the municipality in my, my estimation, that's, that's one of my arguments going forward. With our legislators and, uh, even I wanna kind of do on the, on the governor's office and say. You know, you let, you let, you let us, gave us the grant, you approved every step we've taken, so. You approved every step we've taken so far, we're ready to put a shovel in the ground, and you're saying no?
Because, because of no housing.
They didn't say no were taken.
Yeah.
Right.
But I mean, if if we gotta wait to go through the whole zoning process again, for there any changes, we're talking lost, a lot of lost time.
You might lose it at that point, they may decide we're not waiting.
Right, and 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 just from the zoning point, the zoning point took so long and these guys went to all these hearings. Is we protected the town and we phased it in with certain commercial development. So it would mitigate the impact to the school system, so you would do one section of commercial with some housing, the second. Phase has more housing, so you get a blend, and now we're getting, we're getting. They don't, they wanna do one section of it, which is all the housing and. Not no more senior citizen, the the.
The memory care.
The memory care. And the YMCA is not, you know, that type of.
And up to point five two kids per bedroom is the national average, so there's an aptitude with the.
Right, with no commerce, with no more.
The best I can tell you is that we have reached out to a number of people who are willing to go to bat for us. And the governor's office will be next. But. The argument that we made is that they and and we know. That there are some potential. Possibilities. And they're just sitting back and they're waiting. And I would really hate to say. Got sewer, but you don't have any water. And and that's that's the argument that we're making.
And the point that we made to to the state is that, you know, we've got other properties that we can develop. We can't just wait for heritage developers to finally decide what they're gonna do. Yeah, we we've got five or six other possible sites for for commercial development. And without the water and then the discussion with the federal government. When we they told us, we told them that they're not gonna let us put the water in right now. They're saying, oh, what are you talking about? Says, you just spent eight million dollars putting a sewer line with no water, and that makes sense.
So I got one more thing. The Airbnbs, if I remember the conversation from. A year ago, I guess it was back in here. Was there something mentioned that if you. If these people, these Airbnbs, you know, deal with their problems locally, but. If they go to the state and get permitted to do those Airbnbs, didn't that, Greg, is something that with the state, they were complaining about the state taking these? Out of the Airbnb money that they would collect for like if you rented the house for a weekend, now the state gets a portion of it.
I thought it was sales tax based.
Whatever it was, right, but now they get, so if they do it on the slide right now, the state's not even getting anything.
But I think, isn't the state getting sales tax on a lot of stuff now? Right, right, I mean. But they don't know, but, yeah.
They don't know about it. Yeah.
Going back to the last time we built was problematic, residents that Scott Barney met. I recall them retaining an attorney and coming in and our attorney, I believe, that told Mario that it had to. Pull back because there was pending litigation. That they were filed, does anybody know, I know that's that case is done. But I don't know the outcome.
I don't either.
That's what I meant about getting all that stuff back together and get it in all.
Because now if you approach that problematic one. Their attorney may have a different take now that.
You're right. And you read about it every day in the paper with knowing, you're 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 reading it every day.
It just keeps evolving though, yeah. Okay. Yes.
Lauren Soder, sixty-seven Mashburn, I just wanted, um, I know that there was a little bit of con- of conversation about how would you get the word out? You know, now and written letters or whatever. I just think that, you know, we can keep in mind that the tax bills are gonna go out. So if there's something that needs to go out to everybody, it could be an insert into tax bills and, uh. Everybody will get it anyway.
Thank you.
The tax tax bills are not done locally. We've there on the contract, uh, quality data. Print them and mail them. Now, I'd ask Leona, uh, if that's possible to put an insert in. At this point in time, I don't know where they are, in the process.
We'll ask Leona. Any other public forum? Any, yes.
Debut fifty-nine Leah Avenue. I know my memory gets mixed up sometimes, but several years ago. Didn't the town have a referendum that set aside X number or approved X number of dollars? For the sewer and water on Route sixty-one, sixty-four and. The powers that be, uh, went ahead and found us grants and and stuff. Um, is that money still able?
We could be able to apply, you know, to go out to bid to check the, uh, the people who voted to support it and. But we haven't bonded any of that money yet.
Okay, cuz I'm just curious that if we could use that money to save the project and at least get it to an end point.
That discussion has, uh. Been brought up and. My personal feeling is if we were to do that, state of Connecticut would turn around and say, well, Grizzle don't need it, you know? They got their own money. So I don't really, real reluctant to go that way just yet.
Well, well, we're we're balancing, we're doing a balancing act, there's our contractual obligations. That we had certain people and equipment on the ground and and stuff, so we're we're, it's a very tough balance.
Yeah, and I mean, I I know. It's kind of like. And I I I have to go back and ask about the history of it, but, um. You know, they, DECD. Allowed us to go out to bid.
They approved.
And they approved it. So we did, and we proceeded. And then all of a sudden, here come the breaks. Because. The first thing they said was, the very first phone call we got from them was. We heard that Heritage River is no longer coming and the property is up for sale. And it was probably one week later. We got another, well, we got a request from Heritage River. To go on a team's meeting with DECD. And that's where they launched their plan to us. So we we got hit and we got hit and we got hit. And, um, there were, there were no arguments listened to, um. Or concerns, it was, it was a very, very frustrating meeting. So we just started reaching out to the powers that be and we're just gonna keep. Pushing and pushing and pushing.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And now I said, it's like I said, the next, the next fall is gonna be to the governor's office, so.
But the funding's not full right now.
And and what they said was that nothing can proceed. Until Heritage River and NPH. Or NHP. Are.
Funded and built.
Well-funded, and and it has a lot to do with, um. With the housing authority. They also have to go through the housing authority, so there's a number of steps that they have to take. And our last email to both Heritage River and to DECD was. We're ready to go. How long is this process going to take? And I've yet to receive a response from anybody.
All on Heritage giving us the green light saying, hey, we're coming.
Well, they've said that. Right, and the state being comfortable that they have the funding and they have the funding in place to do it.
Yes, Dave.
Debut fifty-nine Leah, the housing that they're initially talking about putting in, the two hundred and ten units, are those? The proverbial low-income tax break housing?
No more low-income, it's all.
Whatever they call it.
Uh, workforce housing.
Workforce housing.
Okay, same thing.
It's like, it's just a different.
Workforce housing, that's the term that we are only allowed.
That two hundred and ten units put us over.
Oh, definitely, yes, yeah, the ten percent, yes.
Can we live at that amount? By our capacity?
Um, then it goes into a whole different thing where.
Okay.
You know, um. They seek, what is it? Dash eight dash thirty G? Eight dash thirty G where. Yeah, it doesn't matter, it's out of our hands. We cannot refuse.
But they have to maintain the way it's being built. It's gotta be off a set of plans.
Yeah. So. Alright, yes.
You're saying that eight thirty B or whatever it is.
G.
Eight thirty G, that overrules the ten percent if we if we reach out ten percent?
No, when we're under ten percent, they can start forcing housing. We all with that, we're fine.
And currently, what is, what exactly is approved that down there at this particular?
Nothing.
Well, the original plan with the phase in, with the two buildings of the the YMCA, okay, uh, and. Uh, elder, uh, what is it, Alzheimer's. Memory care facilities with almost a hundred and fifty of those were tax ba- based. Oh, that that's a big number, but there's not gonna any kids in the school system with that. And then the housing on the back side is phase two, you know, some of the houses. There was some housing in the phase one, but the alliance share was in phase two. Right.
Yeah.
And that, and they just wanted to do two hundred and ten now, without the memory care, without the YMCA, without. And take take that land and make it kinda commercial. We haven't seen an official drawing yet, so.
Nothing.
Also, just just verbally, we're envisioning what they're thinking.
Back there when it first came on earth, the number that was quoted around was a hundred million dollar project. Okay, including the memory chair and the three buildings up front, and I think there was possibly a fourth building that had some housing. Is that essentially what we're still talking about?
We don't know.
No, because they've, what they're doing is they wanna subdivide the property.
Okay, but then they've gotta come back for a totally.
Exactly.
Right.
And at that point, you guys will have some pretty good control.
Well, I hope.
Yeah.
Thank you, Richard, fifty-two dealing. So. Just real quick at just a. Because of discussions that have happened before with this property, at two hundred and ten affordable housing units or whatever they're being called. Um, the national average at that time was point five two kids per bedroom. Assuming everywhere in places a minimum of two bedrooms, you you could potentially get two hundred and eighteen kids in there. And that would be like an overload to that school.
If they were building. Right, 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 I I I don't know the combination of the single bedrooms, and and that's why, you know.
Is it singles? I don't know.
Yes, yeah.
The original proposal had a lot, mostly one bedroom.
There was a more of a on top of. Three floors, two floors on top, like in Islam, you have a commercial on the bottom and then two.
So stay tuned, everybody. Okay, is there any other public forum? Okay.
Motion to adjourn, second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn at. Seven oh two. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Can't believe they did that to you guys.